Clock on the wall says it's six o'clock, so it is time for the very first meeting of the Beaver Creek City Planning Commission for 2018. I didn't say 2017. If you would be so good as to call the roll?
Ms. Akers?
Here.
Mr. Curran?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Schreider?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. We're all here, so we have a relatively short agenda this evening. Staff, are we good on the agenda?
Okay.
So I will ask for an approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda from last month?
Second.
Well, for this month.
You're with us this month, yes, sorry.
Thank you. And we'll do that by general consensus?
Aye.
We're good? Okay. Meeting minutes from last month.
Will we approve the meeting minutes, Mr. Chair, for the December 2017 meeting?
All right. No one has any problems with it? Good. And we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you. Okay, this evening, we have two public hearings and a decision item. The first public hearing is PUD 97-1, mod 1017A. And that case has been withdrawn by the applicant. That's the Lidle Grocery Store. So that has been withdrawn by the applicant, so I need a motion to permanently withdraw this.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second motion.
I have a second. And we'll just say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, that passes. So our second public hearing is PC 18-3, Car Paradise.
This is case number PC 18-3, conditional use on an application filed by Ayman Hamdan, 4110 Colonel Glenn Highway, Beaver Creek, Ohio 45431. The applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for a car rental business to be located at 4110 Colonel Glenn Highway. The property is located on the north side of Colonel Glenn Highway, approximately 150 feet west of the intersection of Colonel Glenn Highway and East Side Drive. Property is further described as Book 1, Page 2, Parcel 15, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. As it is with our public hearings, we first will ask for presentation from the applicant. Then we will move along to a report by our staff. Once we've done with that, I will open the public hearing for public comment. Once we've finished with all that, we will discuss it. We'll close the public hearing, discuss it among ourselves, and hopefully come to a conclusion. So, do we have an applicant?
Hello?
Ah, we have an applicant.
How's everyone?
If you would, you got in?
Can you read the first line away?
Yes, you're on.
Oh, that's nice.
Your timing was exquisite.
That's nice, fantastic, fantastic. Good evening, gentlemen. Happy New Year, everyone. Happy New Year, everyone.
And you also?
Nice, nice, fantastic, fantastic.
If you would be so good as to identify yourself, so?
Yes. My name is Mario Ayman Hamdan. I'm the owner of Sheisha Cafe. It's a small smoke shop, look like a place we sell cigar and tobacco products and stuff. Small business by 4110 Colonel Glenn Highway. And I thought to ask for permission to get a permit to rent car business over there. Look like I'm adding another small business next from the smoke shop. Because the smoke shop usually is nighttime after 8:00 PM. Say daytime, there's nothing to do. And because the property is there and the location is there, we don't need to add not much on this. The parking lot will be empty daytime. I thought to put few cars, look like around average 10 cars. And we do look like a rent business, rent cars. Our hours for the smoke shop start from 8:00 PM and up, you know, we close sometime midnight, sometime 1:00 AM, depend the business. But because the business is very slow now with all the, because we're pendent from the student section, usually the Rite State, Kell College, you know, the kids, they give us business. And whether outside the town, the business die. And for that reason, I thought to add something else, just to keep living the dream, you Then our business will be rent cars, and we're gonna have, look like average 10 cars, more or less, you know, around that. The hours will be daytime from, say, from 10 to 5. It will not interrupt with my other business. The parking lot is good size, nice parking lot, have a nice view, beautiful. And my other store will start after 8:00, you know. Usually we have, look like maximum maybe, in one time, maybe four, five customers. Then we have enough space for, you know, both of them. As I said, that daytime, there is nothing much there, traffic. I thought to do this kind of business and see what you guys say. The location is very nice, parking lot is very beautiful. And the whole street have a lot of car businesses, you know. I don't know which car, what they do, if they do, if one of them do the same as me, but maybe down the street, there's somebody. Maybe the area is, I think it was B2, they said. And we have neighbors, they have some kind of business in cars. I don't know if they do rent or lease or something. And some of them, they do different things. But our, you know, main thing is renting vehicles. Because we take advantage that those, you know, we have a nice friend's military. Sometimes they come for short time period in city, say for a week or so, couple weeks, and they like to get some, you know, a reasonable car with cheap price. And we're very close to the base, that will be convenient. And that's all. Any questions?
If we have questions, we'll ask them later. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PC 18-3. It's the Car Paradise Conditional Use Application. Again, the applicant's requesting conditional use approval for the operation of a car rental business in conjunction with their existing hookah bar. It's about a one-acre property. Property's in extreme north end of Beaver Creek, west of the intersection of Grange Hall and Colonel Glenn, on Colonel Glenn Road. You see, here is a closer aerial photo of the site as it is. The pavement stops at this location, and it can, and the property continues much further. It's a deep but narrow property, so ultimately ends, and I think it's easier to see on the zoning map, but it ends at the end of the city. And north of that is Wright Patton Air Force Base. To the west is CPD 03-4. It's the beauty salon, Tavernay, Tavernay Beauty Salon. I'm sorry, to the west was. To the east is an R1A property, but it's kind of a multi-use property. There's a church in the rear, and then I believe that's a veterinary clinic in the front. So it's kind of an odd leftover from the township days where the properties, two businesses cross property lines, but that's what's to the east. And then ultimately, to the south is vacant commercially zoned property for office space.
We'll give you a chance.
Here's a picture of the building. I took this off of Google Earth, and I actually took this picture in October of 2017, so it's a really recent picture of the building as it stands today. You know, there's parking around, and it's kind of hard to see, but there is circular access around the site. But again, with these parking spaces, the way they're configured now, it's a challenging site to, if you filled up that parking lot, it's a challenging site to navigate as it is today. Under your consideration, there is a resolution. Because this property is owned B2, and if you look in the zoning code under the allowed uses, there's a delineation between allowed uses and conditionally allowed uses. And those conditionally allowed uses, car rentals, businesses are conditionally allowed in a B2, but they have to go through this extra step to make sure that, you know, they fit in with the overall plans of the city. So there's some selected conditions in your resolution for your consideration this evening. One is that no vehicle be parked, stored, repaired, or left unattended in an area that's not paved. You know, we want to make sure, because there's that gravel area to the back, and I took, this aerial photo is from 2008. And you could see at the time, it wasn't this applicant here, but, you know, they had a car, I believe it was car sales. But, you know, they store their overflow parking in the gravel area, and we want to make sure that doesn't happen again. So there is a condition that, you know, they're gonna be required to provide up to 40 parking spaces because these businesses don't necessarily overlap or, in some cases where if you have two businesses where one is primarily evening, one's primarily day, you can share parking. But these, you know, the car rental service, I mean, even when they're not open, they're still storing cars, so there was no real way to make that overlap. So, you know, there is a requirement to have 40 designated parking spaces to be striped. And that they're not allowed to sell vehicles out of the lot. I mean, that's not an allowed use in a B2 anyways. We just wanted to reiterate it with the condition. Also, this is the existing ground sign. We've had an effort over the last 10 or 12 years to add brick bases and brick wraps up the side. And so if they do decide to put a sign out for their car rental service, or add a panel to this sign, any change to that, then they're gonna have to rebuild it as a sign with the brick base and the brick wrap, so that it does meet our current standards. Also, one that's kind of fairly unique, we've had it in one other case when Walmart was approved in 2006, was a compliance bond. And our zoning code allows for that, under conditional uses specifically. It says that under Section 158, 171(c)(5), that, you know, you're allowed to require a cash bond so that they stay in compliance. And so we propose this condition, that they post a $2,000 cash bond, so that we make sure that we don't get an instance where they're parking cars. Or, you know, if they pave up to this area, and they find that they need even more parking, then they don't park in the gravel or in the grass or anything like that. We want to make sure that that doesn't happen. And not that we're saying, we think it's gonna happen, we just, we want to take some preventative action on that. So there is a requirement for a $2,000 cash bond. And in the condition further states that, you know, we give three days notice, so if they're in violation, they have three days to comply. And if they comply after day two, and then three days later they come out and we see it again, then that's considered a continuation of that in the first non-compliance. So, you know, we are allowed to take a $100 violation fee for every day that they're in violation of the approved, should they be approved this evening. But in your resolution, there are 20 conditions. Staff does recommend approval subject to the 20 conditions in the resolution. And as this is a public hearing, we're happy to answer any questions following that public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice, comprehensive report for us. As this is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against or simply ask questions? You've got three minutes. This is your time. Step right up.
Less than one minute.
Okay.
Thank you. This property, I don't have this, I love this light, man, I love it. I gotta work with you guys sometime, I gotta work. Okay, okay. This property, and this, and all this, been built back in the days from Dr. Tom's father. Dr. Tom, who's the owner now, who's in charge, the old lady, she's still alive, but, you know, she's very nice, she got too old. And her son in charge, who's here, he's the owner of this pet clinic, is a doctor. And he's in charge of all this clinic, and my property, and the church, too. They built it back in the days, that all this section, you know, all this, owned by the same family, you know. And actually, back in the days, they owned this, too, then they sold it to somebody else, the neighbors. He was a great man, and he loved the city of Beaver Creek. He did a lot back in the days, and his son is continuous doing it. Then we cooperate together all the time with any work we need to be done. Dr. Tom gave us approval for whatever we want to do here as a rent. And if we do rent a car, we're not gonna take more than one section, that's all. You know, that will be enough for us. Half of it will be enough for two, because I can put some cars here and some here, will be enough. And the rest will be free for the other business. And my other thing I want to say, that I went through everything with my attorney, and I understood everything, and I agree with all the terms of the city of Beaver Creek. Thank you so much, all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
This sounds dumb because there's nobody out there, but I still have to say it. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding this particular public hearing? Seeing none, first I'll ask, was there any written input?
No.
No written input. Then I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to our planning commissioners. Ms. Akers, I will never forget you again, so I'll start with you.
Thank you, sir. I actually have a few questions for the applicant, please.
Yes, Ms.?
Sir, can you tell me, do you plan on constructing some type of building, or like a small establishment for the rental portion, or do you plan on running the rental portion outside of the existing building?
What, only what we need is just the same phone, actually, we're using, and the same desk, because inside it looks like showcases, showcases.
Mm-hmm.
And only what we need, you know, small book to take the information of the customers, we're using the same showcases and the same everything. We're not changing nothing physically inside. All the construction stays as it is, and nothing, you know, gonna be changed inside or outside.
Okay.
Because we're taking, this business is not really look like a busy business, you know, it's not much, you know. Maybe we have a customer, couple customers a day or so. For that reason, we keep everything the same inside. We have some showcases around there, it's just, I wish I know you want to see, I took some pictures for you. It's a beautiful place, very beautiful.
Understood.
Unfortunately, the business is not so good, but I tried to do something else just to keep the business going.
Absolutely.
Then the showcases, we're gonna use them. We have one of them closed to the door.
Okay.
And on a small book that we take information from the customer, just the customer can good to go.
Okay, so you'll have to excuse my ignorance, but could you, this sheisha, does it?
It's a smoke shop.
Does it emit an odor? Is it?
Yeah, it's the people who's over 18 years old.
Okay.
We have, look like, people will, people like to come, smoking cigar, smoking hookah, sit down, drink some, you know, soda or something.
Okay.
We don't have, we don't sell alcohol or anything. We sell just tobacco products.
Okay. And then on the signage of the building, do you plan on adding additional signage to the building?
Not for now, signs, not necessary, because my car will say, you know, will say, you know, we're gonna have small signs in the car that say, "Rent Me," or, you know, or advertising, you know, some, something simple, you know.
Okay, so you don't plan on having?
We don't think now for do anything. If in the future I see the business kicking, then I will come back to the city and ask them, let's do something new.
Okay.
But for now, we keep everything as it is, you know.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I went, as I said, I went through all the terms with my attorney, and he explained to me everything. For that reason, I know that I'm not supposed to change anything in construction, anything. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Curran?
I'll pass right now.
Okay.
Ms. Akers pointed some items out that I was interested in also, Mr. Chair.
Next.
I just had one question for the applicant. Sorry.
Yes, sir.
What about maintenance issues? How and where are you gonna perform any maintenance? So let's say you have minor breakdowns, things like that.
We have, in Dayton, we have a garage.
You have a garage in Dayton?
Yeah, yeah. We have a garage next from Omega Auto Sale, and it's in Kiwi Street.
Okay.
Small one. And we just recently took it just for that purpose, when we, you know, when you get a car from a customer, we take it there, we rent it, we make it nice, we check everything, mechanism if need anything, then we bring it back here.
Okay.
Yeah. I know the history of this car lot from back in the days, because me and Dr. Tom, good friends with the family, for a long time. And I remember there is a tenant back in the days had some kind of a small thing outside, it would not look good, it not look good. Looked like something to do maintenance in the street, it was horrible, you know, not look good, really.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
The city of Beaver Creek is beautiful, and we keep that lot very gorgeous, very nice. If you look at it, it's beautiful. We keep it the same way for many years. I've been there a lot of years now, and all the maintenance, all that will happen in Dayton, Ohio.
Okay, perfect. That was it?
Thank you, sir.
That was the only question I had?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those were all the questions I had right now.
All right, Mr. Schreider?
So I just have one question for staff.
Yes, sir. So, on the topic of exterior signage, I know that there's not extra?
Turn your mic on.
There's not extra signage allowed to be put up, placed on the window, and we have to redo the street sign.
Right.
What about the cars themselves? Can there be big stickers on the car, like he mentioned, that says "Rent Me" right out in the front?
Whirlies?
Balloons, banners, things hanging off the car?
I mean, they don't have balloons and banners, it's based on the general zoning code, doesn't, you know, doesn't allow the wind feathers or the banners on the cars or advertisements on the cars like that. I mean, if you put some, something in like the rearview mirror as a rental thing like that, I mean, that's not, I mean, I don't see that being a problem.
Okay, so you can't turn a car into a rental sign?
Right.
Okay, that's, that was my only concern. Thank you.
It sounds like Quaker State. Remember the controversy about whether the?
The car was assigned.
Car was assigned or not? We went round and round on that one. Well, you answered one of my questions about the maintenance. I presume, and you don't have to come up, I presume this is a, this is your own rental, you're not franchised from?
No, we're not franchised. We're small, we're not franchised.
Okay, okay.
I do my own, my own cars.
Okay, so you're not franchised?
No.
That's fine. Okay.
And the other question, the other, I'd like to answer him, that?
No, 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 no.
You're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Good.
Any second helpings? Or first helping for you, Mr. Curran?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Gentlemen, Ms. Akers, if there are no further questions or concerns, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PC 18-3 for the conditional use of the car rental Car Paradise with the 20 exceptions.
Conditions.
Conditions, sorry.
Second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And you all saw the slightly modified?
Yeah.
Resolution.
Right.
And Randy, I worked on this. If you do look at number five, I changed what Randy wrote.
Microphone.
I changed, if you look at number five, on page two of it, "Nor shall any vehicle be parked, stored, repaired, or left unattended in a manner so as to obstruct in the..."
Oh, he's a double negative.
Yeah, exactly. So the "not" needs to come out.
Got it.
So that was just, you know, in us talking over the phone.
Not a challenge.
Came through.
And just as a point of clarification, please let me know if I'm right or wrong. This being a conditional use, we are legislative on this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, this does not go forward to City Council. It lives or dies with Planning Commission. This is one of those small areas.
More than street, actually, because it's actually approving.
Right. Right. Okay. Just want to make sure everybody understood that. Okay, I have a motion, and I had a second, did I not?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the 20 conditions, and this is the 3 January version of the resolution. Read the roll.
Mr. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, 5-0. Welcome to your new business. We'll look forward to seeing what you got.
Virtual paradise.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Blaine. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Yes.
I'm so proud of all of you. You guys do beautiful, very professional job.
Okay, we are on our second, and I've lost my agenda.
Second time around.
We now have, we have one item left, and that's a decision item, PUD 17-3.
Right.
I don't have anything, because it's decision item.
Right, this is a decision item, so.
You need a motion to untable.
Yeah, it has to be untabled. It was tabled.
Okay, that's right, it was tabled. So before we go any further, we'll need to untable it.
Mr. Chair, I move to untable PUD 17-3, SSP number 1, Cedar Brook Farms.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. We'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, now we are legal, and you're ready to proceed.
Just a few updates. I know at last month's meeting, you had tabled this application for some further clarifications and for some considerations. And so I want to go over a few things that the updated resolution that you have before you, and there is red and blue text inside there, just for clarification, the red is what we've added, and the blue double strike through is what has been removed from the original resolution. One thing that the updated resolution does is clarify that the homeowners association, first it states, it just reiterates that the homeowners association documents need to be reviewed and approved by the attorney, as well, and be recorded with the county before, you know, we issue zoning permits for any of the houses, so that, you know, there is an HOA established before, before any selling of any property happens to any private residents. But it reiterates and clarifies that the HOA will be in charge of maintaining the landscaping in the common areas, as well as what we discussed last month, is that they'll maintain the landscaping inside the traffic circle on Newton Drive. Another thing that this proposed resolution does, and Mr. McHugh pointed out, that we needed a slight, a word needs to be removed from condition number 14 about final landscape place and street tree placement. It should be, instead of street tree, it should be common area tree placement, is subject to final review. So it's just, because what this proposed resolution, or modified resolution states that the street trees, we move back into the front lawns of people instead of out between the sidewalk and the street. So what that also does is opens up the possibility, and Planning Commission, this is something that we'd like you to think about this evening, and we didn't have it in the resolution or anything, but, you know, it's something that staff would be on board with, is, right now the right-of-way is 60 feet. That's because there's the road, and then a 10-foot tree lawn, and then the sidewalk. And if we're not doing street trees, then we can reduce that tree lawn, what it is, it just end up being a separation between the sidewalk and the street, but we can reduce that down to 5 feet, and on both sides, that way we can have a 50-foot right-of-way instead of a 60-foot right-of-way, so that extra 10 feet can go into the front lawns of these lots, ultimately making each lot size at a minimum 300 square feet, 300 square feet larger. So, I mean, it would technically up the size of each of the individual single-family lots. So, again, this proposed resolution moves those street trees back into the front lawns instead of into the right-of-way. In that way, it's a lot clearer on who's, I mean, it'll be the individual property owner's trees, not the city's trees or maintenance responsibility. Another thing that this proposed updated resolution does is reduce the number of the speed tables on Newton Drive from three down to two, and it also, we included an exhibit, Exhibit B, and states the general location, you know, we wanted to get one to the north of this last side street on Newton Drive, as well as one into the, where the Newton Drive will be extended and close to where it's gonna be extended to the existing stub on Newton Drive. It'll still be in an area where there's your curb and sidewalks, so we're not gonna have to worry about the signs on each side from my end. Actually, no, that's gonna be on this one. This one, I believe that there won't be curb and gutter, so we're gonna need to have the This one, I believe that there won't be curb and gutter, so we're going to need to have the signs on each side, that's right. This one is going to have and this one is not, so there was that requirement for the signs to be on the side. Also, in addition of some evergreen trees along the northern property line as well as the northeastern property line, let me get to the site plan, but I just, it, mainly in this area where there's going to be single-family residential as well as, and it doesn't have, and we're not looking for a complete screening, it's just a breakup of the yard or between, a separation of the yard, so just, you know, some, uh, scattering of evergreen trees along that northern property line. Again, those will be in, in the individual private properties, so they won't be as part of the H O A to maintain. It would be ultimately up to the homeowner that buys the lot to maintain them and, and keep those trees there. Okay, that's my list. One thing that we also discussed was, there was some interest in looking at the traffic counts to see the actual number of traffic in and out of that neighborhood right now. And so, uh, our street department went out and did traffic counts, one in this location here, just west, um,
Fair Oaks.
Fair Oaks, okay. And then one here on Shetland Drive. And what they found was, there was an average daily traffic, or they did it on December twentieth, so it was just a random day, but there was a hundred, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four cars going, in, I mean, it's in a combination of the two directions, so it was a total of seventeen hundred and seventy-four cars leaving or entering this subdivision of these three hundred homes. And then when you got to this location, there was an average, there was an average daily count of twelve hundred and seventy-four. So you found that a good sixty or seventy percent of the traffic actually used, uh, went Shetland and, and back rather than Newton, Newton and back, on that given day, I mean, but, I mean, we have to assume that that's an average day and, I mean, there was no advance warning that this was going to happen or anything like that. So we did find that, you know, a majority of the people who use that neighborhood or come in and out of that neighborhood actually use Shetland rather than Newton. So that's just, I mean, that's anecdotal, but that's just something that we, we pointed out. So again, your resolution before you has this, uh, these changes and staff still recommends approval of the applicant's request. Again, if we want to do the fifty-foot right of way, I mean, I would suggest adding that as condition number twenty-five. It's just, um, you know, fifty-foot right of way should be allowed within this development with five-foot tree lawns. But again, we recommend approval and we'll happy to answer any questions you guys have at this time.
Thank you. Since this is a, this is, this is an approval item rather than a public hearing, it's, it's us discussing. So I'll start with you, Mr. Curran, and I promise I won't forget Tiffany.
Well, uh, Mr. Chair, I think that what Randy's put together is acceptable. I, again, as I said, I remain a little bit dubious about these cut-through streets. I realize I've heard all those story about the thoroughfare plan and so forth, but, uh, I can live with what they have.
Okay.
Me next?
You're next.
All right. Um, honestly, I don't have any questions, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and, wanted to say thanks to staff and the developer for kind of answering our questions and concerns to,
Right.
You know, to be able to connect these roads and giving us a little bit more clarity. The only other thing I would say is, I think as we go forward, just, just me giving my two cents, I would li, I know it's an additional cost to the city, but I'd love to see traffic counts anytime we do any new residential that we're connecting to old, just, it seems to be the number one so far in the few I've been involved in that everybody wants to know a traffic count because everybody talks about how much traffic they're going to create.
Yeah, I spoke with our engineer and after, after the Newton Drive extension gets built, you know, we were going to look to see, we're going to, we're going to put down more traffic counters just for another day and-
Because I think, I mean, I've said this before, I've been on record, I think we're going to actually reduce the amount of traffic that flows through Newton, I think it's actually going to help with, as, as, instead of that exacerbating it, so. But just want to say thanks to staff and everything looks good and I have no issues at all, thank you very much.
Mr. Schreider?
I don't have any further questions, I appreciate all the effort you guys put into it, I think you addressed my concerns.
All right, and Ms. Akers?
I have no further questions, I also want to say thank you to staff and thank you to Mr. Mormon for answering any questions that we had and the concerns that we had. And I do want to comment that I know that Mr. Mormon did go out and look at the creek and the dredging issues and we kind of discussed that and we think that the detention ponds will actually help those issues, so I'm glad to see that was taken care of. The other thing that we had also considered is that if necessary or if we deem necessary, the city is willing to explore putting forward a electronic sign on the Newton Drive just to monitor the speed in the event that that's something that we need to be doing or that's a concern that still arises once the connection is made. So other than that, I have no further questions and thank you again.
Excellent, I will, I will add my kudos to staff for, for working this out and also with our applicant for being sensitive. I have a vested interest in this because I live in that plat, I live on Shetland Road and I can tell you there's plenty of traffic down Shetland every day. But on the other hand, I've been moaning about one outlet for that three hundred odd houses for the thirty years I've been on planning commission, so connecting Newton is our only chance to, to make that plat more accessible particularly in an emergency. Just one question and you'll probably tell me it's in there somewhere. The detention pond will be maintained by the H O A, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just glanced quickly through there.
Yes, in condition number ten.
And, okay, good. It wasn't with the, with the, uh, the other common area, so. One further question, and I don't know if staff can answer this or applicant. With this additional square footage, what will be the smallest lot size now?
I believe-
Ten thousand.
There was, uh-
There was one lot that was like eighty, eight thousand or eighty-one hundred feet.
I think there was a seventy-four hundred square foot lot.
I thought the smallest.
And adding the three, I mean, it'd bring it up to eight thousand square feet.
Oh, okay.
That's the only heart, heartburn I have with this entire, with this entire thing is that, um, you've got lot sizes between eight thousand and twenty thousand square feet, very close to each other and they're planning on building essentially the same homes on many of those lots. Please tell me if I'm wrong, are, are you planning on using, uh, building essentially the same model homes regardless of lot size? Step right on up.
Thank you, good evening, all.
That's my, that's my only heartburn with this whole operation.
No problem, and I appreciate you asking. My name is Sherri Oaks Developer and, uh, you know, we, we were waiting for the approval here this evening before we can authorize our engineer to go to the extensive construction drawings. What we are seeing as we have in, in other communities is the desire for different size lots for different users. It's to our vested interest as developers to maintain the value, so I can guarantee you that the products will be, you know, accommodating, but a little bit different. We are a custom builder, we are not a production builder.
Right, well, my, my main concern is seeing a two-court house on a one-court lot because it does look, it does crowd things, um, and-
Certainly understand that, but we feel we can make it look very attractive. Thank you, sir.
Okay. And just, just for staff, very quickly, were those, I think, five lots on the northwest corner of the development up against, um, Ballymead, were those always there?
Yeah, those have been there the whole time.
Okay. I don't know how I managed to overlook them, but I did.
Yeah, those are lots one through five.
Right.
Five or six.
But that's phase two.
Yeah, I mean, I did, I didn't have-
Can you point with, with your, with your pointer there roughly what phase one and phase two is?
I have a map of that, I didn't, let me put it up on the- Sorry about the-
It's a little busy. Okay.
It's a little retro looking, but yeah, I mean, you could, you could see the phase line is just north of-
Phase one is the lower right quadrant.
Right, just north of the-
Okay.
That first row.
So it'll go just beyond the traffic circle?
Right, they'll build the traffic circle as part of phase one.
Okay. Uh, and just one other question and before we all go buggy on that, uh, the, the, um, the lines around the edge of the property, the, can't think of the word.
Property lines?
No, no, not the property lines.
The P U D boundary?
Perimeter?
Is that that?
No, no. Showing, showing the, the contour, the contour lines, that's it.
Contour lines, okay.
Senior moment, folks, sorry. There are contour lines that run all the way around, almost all the way around the perimeter. Are those up or down?
Eh, varies, I mean, it's just, it's to get the, it gets the, to get the water draining into the ponds rather than-
Okay, understood.
It's to help the drainage.
So that will be more of a swale. What I'm concerned about particularly along the north side where it abuts existing property.
Right.
Uh, I'm concerned that it's going to, and I know it's not supposed to, but I'm concerned it might allow water to run into those existing lots. And if some of my neighbors were here, they would ask that question, so I got to ask it for them.
Hi, I'm Steve Lyle with the Ranky Group, nine, nine-five-nine Congress Park Drive in Centerville. We talked to Mr. Mormon about this and he had the same concern, so we've actually shown him a grating that would bring that stormwater around and to the creek so they wouldn't drain into the adjacent properties. Additionally, um, the reason we're filling up the cul-de-sac, that northern cul-de-sac in order to get the drainage from that cul-de-sac into the pond, so we're, we're having, we're cutting off a lot of the drainage that currently goes to those properties and then the drainage that does go to those properties, we're going to pick up and direct to the stream, so it won't impact them.
Okay, so that's basically a, more of a swale.
There will be a little swale, yeah.
Okay, okay. And it will, it will go into the, the creek there that is part of Merrick Park?
Correct.
And from the other direction into that small detention pond in the northwest corner?
That's correct.
Okay, good, that was exactly the que, that was exactly the answer I wanted to hear. Because I know the folks along that, that southern edge of the existing plat have had water problems before.
Well, we were very sensitive to that.
And there are a lot of, there are a lot of springs in that, in that whole property, the Ballymead folks found out about that.
The, uh, the residents made that loud and clear when they were here and we tried to address that with the staff to make sure that we were taking care of some of those issues.
Okay, fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and just for the record, my property is more than five hundred feet away from this, so I don't have to recuse myself. I checked it. Okay, gentlemen, ladies, uh, any second helpings here?
Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to propose that we add a twenty-fifth condition that makes the street right of way a minimum of fifty feet, please.
Okay.
Need a second on that?
Well, we need, what we need to do-
Need a second?
You need to do the main motion and then add that and then we can, and if there is a second for the motion with the, what you have added, we don't have to vote on it separately.
About section fourteen, you got to strike that, the street, the tree?
Correct.
Condition fourteen, ready?
Yeah, just change street to common area. I mean, we probably could really, just strike the whole, I mean, strike that whole, just final landscape plan is subject to review and approval.
Okay, so and tree placement is?
No, you can screech.
The final landscape plan is subject to approval. So and street tree placement, remove all that.
There we go. Okay, I think Ms. Akers is making this motion, so you are making it with, um, condition number twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve P U D seventeen dash three, S S P number one with the correction to condition number fourteen to remove and street placement and the addition of condition number twenty-five that says the street right of way shall be a minimum of fifty feet.
Okay, and you've got that all down. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, gentlemen?
I'll second the motion.
I have a second. Any, anything else for the good of the order? Gentlemen, ladies, if you can read the roll?
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, five zero, and we will look forward to the, the, our, our new neighbors. Oh, we, we know that, what our applicant said was staff has been very competent and very good to work with and we all know that because they keep us out of trouble on a daily basis. Okay, folks, we are fresh out of, of agenda, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second and don't even need to acclaim that, we are adjourned at seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.
Thank you, ladies.